Accept the nomination, I would like to nominate Patrick LaDuke for Chair.
Set a motion on the floor.
I'll second that.
Have a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Getting none? Patrick, welcome. So before, I know it's not, it's actually your meeting now, Chair, but I wanted to just say, obviously there's been a change. I wanted to personally thank Elizabeth Fitzgerald for her, number one, her time on the board, her remaining time on the board, and as a Chair. And so she, I've certainly got to know her over time. We've gone through many, many challenging and exciting opportunities, so I just wanted to thank her personally for chairing. Thank you.
I thank you as well.
Thank you.
And I look for your guidance moving forward, so I'm glad you're sitting right there. So do we need to move to the election of the Clerk? We do. How do we go about that?
Seeking nominations?
I will nominate Julie Beatty, Ms. Burke.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Congratulations.
So I just want to just, a quick, a little update around, you know, obviously, we love to have a complete board all the time, but sometimes that doesn't happen. And so we just want to make certain that, in the absence of the Chair, it can be anyone on the board who can step into the Chair position. In some cases, it's the Clerk, but it can be anyone on the board. There's no, there's no specific rules that, that would disallow that, or would call that there's a certain order. Some boards do a Vice Chair, but, you know, I don't, I don't feel that that's really necessary. It would be the construct of the board to say, who's going to Chair the meeting, given Pat's absence. And there probably would be some conversation beforehand, knowing that absence would likely be known before the meeting. So, just want to give you that feedback.
Great. Alright, let's move on to Agenda Item 4. Designate a school board member to sign contracts on behalf of the board. We have this flagged for action as well.
Mm-hmm.
Need a nomination for that?
I'll nominate Julie Beatty as well.
Alright, nomination?
I'll second that.
Second. Any discussion on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, thanks Julie.
Moving on to Agenda Item 6. Do we have any comments from the public on items that are not on the agenda? Hi Monica.
Thank you Bridgette very much for being involved. This is huge and made yourself known, but you've all done such an amazing job helping inform so many of us as you were educating yourself. You guys are very lucky to have her. I agree. I wanted to ask the Board if, because we're kind of in this new place, and Bridgette has been such an excellent communicator to the public, I know just figuring out how to use social media in this new world is one of the discussion. But I would love, as I'm sure many people would love, if Bridgette's willing, or anyone, to continue to try to use that source to educate us on a regular basis, as appropriate, the kind of information that anyone sitting in the audience would otherwise know. Example, master planning is obviously going to continue to be something that's top of your mind, but it's not on the agenda tonight until 8:30. And it's just so difficult for families to be there, that Bridgette used to go to the meetings and send us her notes. And with her on the other side of the table, I just was wondering if you would consider allowing her to, whatever that form is, keep us posted with whatever the public can know.
Alright. Are there any immediate thoughts from the Board on this idea?
Well, I think, I mean, we've looked in a little bit to how restricted we may or may not be, and we can perhaps revisit that. And, and I can do that with Bridgette if she's willing to do that. We can talk with our, some legal experts at the Vermont School Board Association about this, and see how much we can do, and how we can formulate that. I know it's been on my agenda to address that, so.
Thank you.
So I want to just-
I have a quick one for Patrick. Would, are maybe if you'd be able to record down again on the Facebook communication or do you stop observing recording that?
Right.
Would it make sense to consider asking Bridgette to do that?
Yes.
As board. She'd probably be more responsive than I, perhaps.
I didn't say that.
You were so hesitant with that.
As of late.
But I would be delighted, I would be delighted to do that. And that was something that I was hoping to do, and that I was hoping to encourage all of us to think about the things that we can be pushing out, as opposed to just being asked for. Because, as Monica said, it's hard to keep up on these things. I find it hard even though I was really engaged and excited about it, so I would, I would love to be able to do that, to the extent that we're allowed. And I think basically what Monica's asking for, I have words in your mouth, is basically information that's public, it's basically sort of, not just the minutes, because those basically just, you know, codify our decisions on the board, but sort of just the notes basically of what we're talking about on, just not every single issue, but some of the main issues that people really care about, so that they don't feel like they're missing something by not being at the school board. And they don't have to sit and watch the entire video, or, or, you know, be here for three hours to do that.
Yeah, on the video, it does have, like, by section, like, you could just go to master planning and watch that one section. That's one of the reasons we went to videoing all the meetings, rather than just once a month, so that people, more people had access to our discussion.
I know you wanted to say something as well, but the only I would, that comes in my mind right now is, a little bit of being, wanting to be thoughtful about if you're speaking on behalf of the board in that role, versus your, your own boardship, or just as a citizen, being thoughtful about how we're constructing that, if we move this forward.
It's a perfect segue into the packet that I gave you. As we have kind of reorganized, it's this one that has the checklist in the very front. Under operational decisions, again, we've just basically traveled through a fair amount of information tonight, but under operational decisions of third, fourth, fifth bullet down is identify communication practices. And I think this is, this is an area, and in the V S B A, your V S B A, there's a communication section in there, which talks specifically about how we want to target that communication. I think you've all, you've all had conversations around, who's the spokesperson? How do we go about it? What are the instruments that we would use in? So I would encourage folks to look through this, from oath of office, all the way up to, you know, just, you know, board development, et cetera. So, so anyway, that's, the checklist is something, there's some online information here, also with V S B A. I'm trying not to get off track here of communication, but this is all about board work. And then, I think connected to that is the very last page, which is the board member quote of conflict of interest. And I think that's an important component to what you just said, Pat, around, are you talking on behalf of? And so there's some really good pieces. This is our policy, it's B1, it's our own policy. And I would encourage folks to review this, and I would love to just have assigned, you know, if you're in agreement, if you're not in agreement, let us know why. But I would love to just have board members just sign this, so that we're all in agreement, so that we're holding ourselves accountable to that. And it does, it does go into, you know, some specifics on that, and it refers to B2, which is our policy that's also posted online, if you have specifics on that.
Is that the packet as well?
So I have B2.
B2 is, B1 is really-
Is it in that?
Yeah.
Is it in this packet?
I don't think it is. I don't think B2 is, but you can get it, and I can get it to you as well. I just put a packet together with the idea to kind of jog some of your thinking, and also opportunities with V S B A.
Okay.
Which are consistent with what you were just talking about.
Great.
I do think around the communication, and, you know, whether it's Facebook, we've, we've talked about Twitter, there's probably a whole host of other things. What I worry about is, number one, one voice, or whose voice? How often? How does it get updated and corrected? Those are some of the things that I worry about. And, you know, we have our, we've grown and evolved in our own management of our websites, and the things that we have within our district, and sometimes those are struggles if you don't have a very specific purpose and assigned task. So, again, I think this is good conversation, and I welcome Bridgette's expertise and desire to do that. But probably we, we need to have more of a conversation around the communication.
Yeah, I think so. So what I'm hearing is, we're going to ask Bridgette to take on the role of at least monitoring the communication, bringing anything back to the board that is worthy of our, of our time and our conversation. And you're going to do a little bit of work, Martin, on some of the open meeting law?
Well, I think, I mean, Bridgette, you should, you should really talk to the expert, it's more important that you talk to the expert to find out what you can and can't do, and push that. But I'd like to be part of that conversation, only because, in my other role, I think there is room that, in fact, there were, there were, was legislation, there were bills introduced in the Senate that ended up not going anywhere, to modify the open meeting laws.
Okay.
And that's kind of one of the things I want to do next year, if I get back in the legislature. So I just want to kind of monitor that, and just, if I can be in on it, on the conversation. But it's really, you know, you should really contact. And I can give you the contact information.
Okay.
Okay. Are we, is this good? Alright. Yes, you may.
So in regard to the timing and the master planning, I know you're talking about it later, but can you give the public an idea? I know you're waiting for your costs to come in, and that's when you'll start to reach out to the public. But will you also be spending time in your meetings discussing how you're going to invite the community in, whether you're doing surveys or whatever? Like, do you think that that won't be happening for a few more meetings? Or are you going to be discussing that as early as today?
If you don't mind, can we talk about that when we get to Item 14?
So you're, you are talking about some of that today? Okay, thanks.
Thank you. No other items from the public, or do we have any amendments to the agenda?
We do not.
We do not have a student voice today?
We don't, but do we have any information about the elected junior?
I do, I do not. I know that there was two identified, and I, I'm not sure if that, there was some board communication with one of, with, with our current Marali, but I haven't, I haven't heard anything else.
So should, how should we be, should we be following up with her? Do you want to follow?
Well, I think there's two candidates currently, and it would, I, my understanding would, board members would meet with the two candidates, or we would have a process, or you would communicate that. So Patrick Burke has identified this, has these two students that are interested in survey.
Okay.
So it would be, I think, a modified process, which seeks to know a little bit more about the individuals, and wanting to serve, and commitment, et cetera. So I'm happy to set that up, if you want, through Patrick, but-
David, at the last meeting, Marali said that she had developed a modified application form, and that was supposed to come to the board from the two candidates, so-
So I don't know where she's at with that, I don't, I don't know. She hasn't forwarded to me, so-
If it makes sense, I, I mean, I'd probably recommend that we get the forms back from the two student candidates first, and then we can make a decision, how to move forward.
Yeah, my concern is the time, and-
Yeah, I agree.
-how, how busy the spring gets, and usually we have our person by now, and I hate to miss the window of opportunity.
You got it. Well, let's find out where, where those are. Alright?
Great. I think that moves us to Agenda Item 8, city and school collaboration.
We don't have a, I don't have a recent update. It was with, and I last met with Kevin Dorn and Pat Nowak, but that was prior to our last meeting, so I don't have a new update, although I think there's a fair amount of things that are going on between city and school, with the recent announcement of the city and UVM, so we're interested to learn more about how that will move forward, or what we need to be informed about, but that's, that's pretty much it. We have not yet set up another meeting. That will be something Pat and I will need to work out with Kevin and Pat Nowak, I'm assuming. Yep. So we'll be, we'll be back in touch with, with the board on, on that.
So I'll work with you, and we'll set up some times.
Yep.
Come back. Any other questions on that, before we move on? Superintendent's report.
I have one item in here that's in your packet, it's the nutritional service piece, and so it's provided to you again. John, in his office, have put together a summary for you, for us, looking at how we're going to end out our year, and so the, kind of the financial information is on the back. John, I don't know if you wanted to go in any more detail, or seek questions from the board?
Well, I think it's important to know that Sue Spear is the accountant in the business office. She's learning my way of doing this, and I'm giving her the big picture this, this time, to say, look, what are the trends? What's the run rate from past years? And do a globe, look at it, the big picture. We, we've met with Rhonda, Rhonda says, well, what, what about this, this, and this? So the next time, we're going to do the line by line, like you saw for our schools out. And I think it's going to be really helpful for our nutrition services director to help keep this, and, and now that she sees this, she can make some decisions to see if we can break even, or, or better, so. And also, this is in response to the board, making sure that you get monthly updates, and so we'll make sure this happens.
This is really helpful, I think.
One question I had, I'm sorry, I don't know if it's the right time to ask the question, but was why payroll looks like it's going down so much in the second half of the year, when that really doesn't seem to, it seems to go down slightly in other years, but seems to be going down significantly? I was a little concerned that maybe that was where we were getting close to break even. I don't know if there was-
Well, it is. There are, there are fewer full-time FTEs now. There are some part-time and substitutes. The one major item that's helped that is, we have a, a new assistant director, that's not the formal title, but we have a production supervisor who's, is their first year, and replaced a long-term employee who also served as, quote, "the bookkeeper." So that's helped, been deployed to areas where maybe there were absenteeisms, or absenteeism, excuse me, or need for some training, needs for some support, to make things run more efficient. So, we are operating with fewer employees.
Any other questions or discussion from the board? Alright. Thank you, John. Thank you, David.
Yep.
Agenda Item 10, this, asked to consider this for action tonight, the school calendar. Do you want us to talk about this, David?
Yep, so it's in your, it's in your, it's in your packet. I think, you know, we've worked hard, first of all, there's, there's a requirement that we have to be consistent with the county calendar for common days and non-common days. So, common days are days that we have 175 common days together, and then for those of us who have additional days in contract for students, we add those on. Where there's non-common days, we can have some choices to either be in school or not. What we've put together is what we think is fairly consistent with what we've done in the past. We were initially trying to move away from, from this, and start a little bit earlier. Clearly, our need is specific to professional development. With the EQR's, PBGR's, PLPs, and right, right now, the desired amounts of time, all the way up through bridging the, the all-grade levels developmentally, we know we, we need this time. We know that it's a distraction to our moms and dads and guardians, the late starts fall quite frequently, but we have seen some pretty significant things happening as a result. We're still not actually where we would like to be with total time available, but it's certainly an area that has been significant. We struggle, and again, I want to welcome Mark Paffili, who's in the audience tonight, hosting us here from Orchard School, but elementary-wise, we struggle to try to find enough time. When we do the, the in-services for the elementaries, we generally will bring teachers together, and boy, when you start to involve the travel time, there's, there's a net loss, and there's a whole host of logistics that, that happen. Nonetheless, we have that time, that remains critical. We're always looking, though, currently, for, for ways to keep student instruction at the forefront, but then professional development as well. So, this calendar reflects currently that kind of, that continued practice. I do have one area that I'm going to need to go and just request to the Chittney County Superintendent's, a waiver for one of the days, which is, I'm drawing a blank on-
March 31st?
Yeah, on March, the March 31st date, that's right. So, actually, I'm not positive of the date.
So why, why do we have a full student day off, March 31st? That's a new off day.
Yep, so it's, that waiver is not for the 31st.
Okay.
The 31st is for a common professional development day for our tech programs. So we, we send students to Burlington, Essex, et cetera.
Yeah.
And so in order for those folks to have a common professional development day, then the 31st was identified as a day to do so. So, that, that was one critical area that was, that was being requested.
Is that new, David?
It is new. It is new. Again, part of what you're seeing with our tech programs is also, our vocational technical programs is also compliant to the same requirements that we're seeing everywhere else. And so they, they also have to be following along, and they have struggled to have any coordinated time together, as a result of the disparate schedules that happen as a result of kids coming from different areas. So this has been a request, it's a, it's a single-day request to try to significantly advance some of that work.
Is there anything else on this calendar that you would indicate is new compared to last year's?
No, pretty typical, again, the way the breaks fall are, you know, it varies, obviously, on the, as the calendar evolves and the dates move. It's fairly traditionally, or consistent with what we've done this year.
It looks, it, it, maybe I'm wrong about this. It looks to me like school's starting a full week later than usual.
Yeah, it is.
Well, part of the, and then so part of the issue is, we're moving it back, then, then you're into, you're into a pretty significant earlier start within professional development and all of the other pieces. So it's, it's courses, professional development, a variety of things don't end, a student, you know, so there's a whole host of things.
So I don't, I don't care so much about the date as I do about, are the student, are the number of student days the same? And I know there-
Yes.
-there's one different, right?
There's the same number of student days, we have 180 student days identified on the calendar.
Even with the March 31st off?
That's correct.
Okay.
Because we had to add that back in. So you see the tally in the very bottom, it tallies by, by, by calendar month.
And then, my other issue is, on the May, underneath May, we have had a kind of a chronic problem with the high school testing, notification to families about the high school testing day, and this says, "to be determined." So-
Well, part of those, we don't know, and we are going to do, we've made a commitment to make sure we get out that information as-
So the question is really, when can you get it out?
Well, as soon as, as soon as we know, and those things are identified. Sometimes we don't know until after the calendar's published.
Right.
So-
But before the start of the school year?
Yeah, I would think we can do that. We typically have been careful not to overwhelm a district calendar, because when we start to put a district calendar, you know, we put the district, we can put everything on there, elementary, then it becomes so complicated, that it's difficult. And so, with the RSS feed that people can do, you can, you know, ask for information and changes on the calendar, you can go to their separate school and get that, or you, you know, you can merge them all together if you want. So, we probably need to help folks to understand that. But, we're a little bit careful not to pull everything together, because then it becomes so complicated.
Yeah, too big.
Okay.
But the answer is, we want to identify the dates, we want to make sure moms and dads and guardians know those dates, obviously the students, so that, you know, there's some clarity around what, what folks can expect on that particular day.
Okay.
And David, is it the same number of late start days?
It is. Same number.
Is there, was there any effort to reduce those? Because I think we went up last year, and we kind of said that it should be a one-year deal.
We did, and we would reevaluate. Yep, and, and basically, we had this discussion administratively, given the requirements currently. Again, we were a little unsure about what was going to come out. For professional development expectations, it remained, we remain the same as a result of that evaluation. In fact, the agency is looking for us to put more professional development time than we currently are allocating. We are troubled with how to figure that out, how to add that in. So, I certainly can give you, I can send you the little excerpt that, that the agency provides around professional development expectations, centered around the work that we're trying to do.
I think it's actually down by one on late starts, in my count. I have-
Should be the same.
I counted it next to this year's calendar, and it was the same.
Yeah. I'll look at it, though.
But, I mean, I guess the observation is, we, when we had this discussion last year, you anticipated that increase to be a one-year deal.
Yep.
So, I'm a little bit concerned this becomes the new normal, because do you count those days as student days as well?
Which days? The late starts, yes.
Late starts. So, I mean, there's, what, 15 or 16 days, that there's really two hours less of instructional time?
Yeah, and what I, what I will tell you, at the high school and the middle school, what happens is there's some compression in the schedule. So there's about the same amount of instructional time, where we change it, is at face time, and some of the other areas that are, are less structured.
But you don't make up for days in the 180 days?
We don't make up for the, no, but basically what happens is, is those face time and, I'm drawing a blank on their other component, are, are taken out of the, of the late start. So when they come to school, then it's, they start right off with their academic component.
It's actually an hour, it's actually one hour for each late start, so, yeah.
I was thinking of the two-hour delay.
I know.
Well, you're not, Elizabeth is not wrong, I mean, we've, when we've reviewed this last year, we said, we thought that it could be a one-year situation, or the, the recommendation was that we would do this for a year, and we reevaluate. I want to be clear with you, that the administrators and myself have evaluated our professional development need to be far more than what we have. And I do think there's going to be some need for some communication and messaging around our continued need for professional development, and how we structure that. And I think that's certainly an area that will need to be shared with, with public. We're, we're, we're making good use of this time, we really feel like it is staggering in a way that does allow, we're struggling at the elementary level to have something similar to this. And we've, we've talked about, could we do something, you know, like this? Or, or different, I suppose, than what we're doing now? So, I don't know, Mark, any feedback from you, for the group?
Yeah, I think it's really good, David, that there's so many times where putting them at the beginning or at the end, it's not always to generalize it into your work every day. And, like, kind of, we're with kids, by the way, you know, so same with us adults, is how we kind of find ways to balance it, and, because everybody here is a learner, you know, students, teachers, principals. And so we got to, and there's so much on our plates for teachers, for professional developers, so, any opportunities we can throughout here, to push it, it's always, it's always possible.
Any other questions on this topic? We do have it flagged for action.
Sorry, I have one more.
Go right ahead.
I just, I just want to remind you, I see that Yom Kippur is on here, but there are some other Jewish holidays that we've had some issues with, especially in the high school before. Again, kind of chronically not recognizing, and I just, we need to make sure that that doesn't happen.
So a couple of things here is that we're not going to identify every holiday, religious holiday on the calendar.
Understood.
So, what we are mindful of is that we are making sure that we're knowledgeable of our students, and the, and our, our students that have a variety of religious practices, and that we're con, we're conscious not to do things that are significant, that would impact their, their education. And again, we had, we had a little bit of an oops, one oops last year, where photography was done for sports programs on, on a particular day. It happened to be, oh, this would be a great day, it's all, it looks totally free. Well, guess why it was free? But, try not to do any meter testing, any pictures, large assessments, et cetera like that, to do that. And I think that's a really important piece. I, I know my colleagues have struggled with, I think we should have all of these holidays on here, and we should be off on these days. Some have gone that way, some have gone none. And where we are is really being sensitive to our, our population, and looking at our attendance factors, that would, that would appropriately indicate that we should, we should be off, combined with what I said earlier. So, that's kind of the methodology that's currently being used around the holiday practice. But Julie brings up a good point around making sure we don't have those, when I'm calling it oops.
So, so from my, from my understanding, at least, why, why are these three listed as opposed to-
They're going to be taken off.
Six different ones listed, or eight different ones?
They're going to be taken off. So, you know what? Your action could be to not have those on there, because you, to be totally inclusive those on there because you, to be totally inclusive is, is problematic.
So you're using some of those major events in how you create the calendar, but it's almost impossible to list them all on the calendar.
They should not be on your, on your, on your version. So I would, I would appreciate you just taking a motion without those if, if you so would. Any other discussion or questions on this? So do we have a motion?
I move we approve the calendar with those modifications.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any more discussion on this? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We've got a couple of small follow-ups that-
Yep.
We'll work through. Thank you. The next item we have is also for board action tonight. Board for resolution for the bond.
Send your packet as well.
Mm-hmm. You want to walk us through this, or do you want to have John walk us through this?
Yeah, I'll let John walk you through the bonds.
Okay.
First of all, I think we should celebrate a little bit, right?
Yes.
Everyone?
Yes.
Audience, board members, administrators, community members.
Yeah, very thankful that it was supported so well. And it's, it's, it takes a lot of planning to get there. So we're over that first hurdle. What you have here is resolution didn't change from the last time, but it's just a clarification of what it means. The IRS found over time that some communities, municipalities, school districts were borrowing money and then taking the money and using it to balance their budgets for past expenditures. So this resolution, if I recall, has been, this rule from the IRS has been around about 20 years. And what it says is, okay, you can do a little bit of planning before you actually have a vote that approves the bond. And, but it has to go before your board. It has to be a public session, and that will give you 60 days prior to do some planning. Well, we were really careful, Bart and Ed Hockenberry, when we're doing the projects this year, not to incur any contracts with architects or engineers, that kind of thing. Because if it failed, there's no general fund back. So the only really real expense in here is some legal fees to get this on the ballot. So it's, it's a formality, but it also helps us to spend money, get those, those contracts, and the RFPs out now. So when the bond is issued in July, we, we can hit the ground running and get the work done. So that's what this is.
Thank you, John. Any questions?
The only question I had was the second paragraph. Where is the issuer expects to pay certain capital expenditures? Do we need just three, you know, three words to say, "and has paid"? Like, we had that language somewhere else in here, just to cover those $1,500 or whatever it was that we had already paid. So in this second paragraph here-
It's the same.
Yeah. So the issuer expects to pay and has paid, I would probably add in there, certain capital expenditures, the reimbursement expenditures, just to make sure that that little bit is covered.
Any other questions or discussion? So I think I would entertain a motion to approve this as edited.
So moved?
Second.
Any, any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution passes. Moves us to Agenda Item 12, Budget and the Voting Review. Do we have documents on our desk?
So at your place, and I sent you probably a series of emails some of you wanted to ignore probably, but one was, one was the single sheet. It was kind of an Excel spreadsheet of the three. And then the other was, and I have to give credit to Ray Mann and actually all the way back to Martin for the creation of, the idea of getting more information on our voter review. So what, what you see on the single sheet is just the recap of our, of our Articles 2, 3, and 4. And then in the others is just a reflection of kind of our voting history. So I, I think this is a really important conversation, as did Martin when this first started, to look at, how are we doing? How are we communicating? And how can we improve? I think this comes right back to the communication component that, that we were talking about earlier. And what are the opportunities and how best could we do it? So I would open that up, Pat, for conversation.
I guess first we're going to get Bernie to be on the ballot every, every election to, to get that turnout to come out.
That's your assumption that it, that it made major difference in our turnout?
I think either way, either way, he's going to be busy.
Or we'll get the South Burlington Community Watch to keep on pushing for voter turnout. Those are the two things we're going to do. Let's make that clear, that that also helped.
That's, all those in favor?
Exactly, yeah, those two things. The one thing we've done in the past, and I don't know that we need to do it this time because it was an effort, but it, but it was helpful, is that we, we also ran, compared to our database of parents and guardians, and looked at the voter turnout of, of parents and guardians, people with, or families, voters with kids in the school. I, I don't know that we need to go through that again. What, what that showed was only a slight, slightly more of a turnout for parents. I mean, it was 25%, 20, 25%. And that particular year, 20% was the turnout of the population as a whole, and it was very close to the same for, for people with kids in the school. I'm not sure that we need to do that this time.
Really? Because that was an effort. Yep. We can, we can, we can pull it and see Ray Mann, who put this together for, for me. We probably could do, do something similar, or at least understand-
Yeah. Well, and the communication point for, from that exercise was to show in fact that we had very strong, we had to have strong support from the community who didn't have kids in the school.
Right.
And that's kind of the point that we made through that, was, was to show that in fact the budget wasn't passing because we had 70% turnout of, of parents and guardians. That's important communication. So.
Yeah, this is feedback, you know, your, your thoughts. We have used this document, not this one, but the one that we've had before, we used it, I think, over the course of the last year. It's probably surfaced, I'm going to say, five or six times in front of the board, as kind of relevant data to communication and information. And so if it's going to help inform our communication strategies, to Martin's point, then let me see what we can find out around that participation, which would give us an indication of our, you know, both, both, our whole population.
Yeah, I just, I would look in and see how difficult it would be. I wouldn't spend a huge amount of raised time.
We can ask, no.
Is there any thought about, you know, redistricting now that 7.4 has had so many, like, the mass exodus of homes there? Because it's-
So be clear about what you're talking about with redistricting.
I don't mean, I, sorry.
You don't mean-
Not that kind of redistricting, Monica, don't post that. No, I mean, I mean the voting district, because-
They do that after the census. That they'll do it in 2020.
Oh, really?
Yeah. They'll look at that again.
That's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
There you go.
Because it's, it's-
Your feeling is just to-
Well, it's a, it's a, it's a district that we always have a, a lower turnout to vote anyway. But now, that's going to be exacerbated by the fact that there are less people living over there.
Right. It's the population.
Right.
Yeah, decrease there and increase another-
It's a good thing to watch, I think, in this point.
Well, well, the thing they do is they try to keep, you know, they try to keep every district at approximately the same number of voters or population. Around, it's around 4,000 there are votes.
So it's going, they're going to have to make a change?
It will, yeah.
Yeah.
Almost certainly.
Thanks.
I wanted to offer that I know that this year there happened to be 1,100 absentee voters, and it was an extreme high. And that may give some interesting learning. Because I know that there was a lot of conversation with families about making sure to vote before being out on vacation. And I don't know if that kind of communication has had been at that level before. You may find that that can give you a unique look good, maybe this year versus last year, considering the absentee.
What was our absentee ballot? Was there a correlation from last year issue or any revision you could get? Yeah, the data that you can get from Donna Kinville includes who has requested an absentee ballot, which also, that encompasses those who go to the city offices to vote. So you, so that, that is helpful. So you could, if you are going to correlate to parents and guardians and such as well, that, that would be fairly easy to do if you're going to go that far. So.
It's easy for me to say yes, because Ray would do it. No. But I, I understand.
One quick observation, which is a little less to do with the voter turnout, is it may be kind of how we present our information. I had a chance to look at some of the other budget books. If I have family or, you know, friends that live in other communities, I always ask them to save their school and board information. And one thing I noted is that certainly in the hard copies, it would be good to include photos of our students doing things-
The people.
That they do. And so much of as well. And then in the presentations, I know, as much fun it was to look at a roof and hallway, to also include student photos and, and the activities that, you know, all of our students are involved in.
Right.
When, it was actually ironic, when I looked at several, it was like, oh my gosh, we forgot. We, we didn't call that.
Yeah, celebrating some of those really key pictures that student learning happened.
That's a great point.
And I would also recommend, in terms of the actual data, and I would be happy to sort of take this on and help maybe think of some ways to visualize the information, pictures. For, for example, the cash flows from the district to the state and back from the state. Because I got very many questions, just, you know, on the street, on the Facebook page, about just exactly how much is going to the state, how much is coming back, how's that categorized. And it's all in here, pretty much, except that one number that they keep asking us about, this 4.9 million number. And I think just for some people, it would be a lot easier than having to dig through line by line.
Just give them a visual, yeah?
Just more visual information for people.
Yeah, I know about three or four years, we put in effort to put together a presentation for outreach. And that was, I think, at a time we really were concerned about getting our budget passed as well. And we should always communicate, obviously, but, but we put in this extra effort and really put that together. Perhaps next fall, we should revisit that. We should plan on revisiting that presentation, which really did focus a lot more on the outcomes and visualizing it and such. So we should probably redo that.
That's good. Any other, any other observations on the, the data? The administrators are going to do the same. I've asked, I sent the same information to them. I've had, I've had a few interesting conversations already about what, what they notice and see. So.
We good? Okay. We'll move on to the legislative update.
I don't have a lot to report out. Martin may have the most, but that's not really fair to him necessarily, but-
How does that matter?
But I, you know, I haven't, you know, the session really kind of is, or for us is kind of on a, on a pause for, for budget purposes. Certainly, I think marijuana legalization is something that's on, on our watch list legislatively. And I think we probably need to have some conversations and prioritize some of the legislative things as they come, you know, come to us in the near future for employment. There's a whole list of different legislative actions. I'm not necessarily able to give you a full articulation of all that are currently, where they all are.
Martin, is there anything you want to add?
Yeah, just a couple of things. There, there is a bill that is being worked on in Ways and Means and the Ed Committee regarding what the yield will be. And that's going to affect ultimately where our tax rate is. But it's still a little up in the air where that's going to land. I think we've been hedging quite a bit during our discussions, that, that percentage tax rate decrease that we have in the budget book is based on the information we were given from the state, and it's subject to change. And it will change. But there's also some other components regarding not having any additional, or, or actually ways of reporting unfunded mandates. And we'll see if that's going to go through. The marijuana is, is going to be an important component. That, that has made it over from the Senate. It's going to be in the House Judiciary Committee. And I, I guess I have a question. We, there was talk about having an additional forum that was perhaps more balanced. And I'm wondering where we might be with that? If that's, I thought that was actually over in Kevin Dorn's-
Yeah, I think we were looking for the, the names and the kind of background of the people that he was-
It is. And I think you, you provided, you provided, some of you provided some dates to, through Delina to find out if that was available. We have to pull you into that, Bridget. What I, I, we have not heard anything back from Kevin confirming that any date currently. I know David Zuckerman was an individual that, you know, was interested or expressed interest through Kevin Dorn to, to do this. I don't know where, I don't know necessarily where that is. And I'll certainly circle back with Kevin to find out where the thing is.
And I guess the, the, one other point is, it's probably too late in the process, I would think, for the school board to take an official position for, on this. But I know that the Vermont School Board Association did provide to legislators a, a talking point on what needs to be looked at. They didn't come out pro or con, but to the extent that's is going forward here is what we think you need to look at. And I, and you probably all, you probably have seen it. Bridget probably hasn't seen it. But it seemed to cover the bases. I don't know that we need to have an official position. But if you have unofficial positions and want to get it to me, I'd, I'd be happy to hear as much on that as possible.
Martin, you, you started by saying it's probably too late. Why would it be too late?
Well, I mean, to get together this forum and then to have a debate-
Oh, I thought you meant just a position paper even if we didn't have from the board-
I mean, if we were able to, to this or-
To articulate a position.
Or the next meeting to, to weigh in, then it may have more impact. But if we don't do it either now or at the next meeting, I think that we will have gone beyond the point where-
So just to be clear on the, on the desire for the, that next step, for what Martin is referring to as the forum, a forum, it was really a desire and a want by David Zuckerman to provide kind of from, from their perspective. And the idea of this would be something that they would, would run. So call it their forum. And you folks, along with the city council, would be invited members into the audience to be able to listen and ask clarifying questions. But it would not be a steering committee meeting with, without you having, it just didn't make sense that way. So we're, we remain consistent in, in that construct. But, you know, as far as, you know, it being called a forum or whatever the case, I'm not really sure what the right name is. But it just, information sharing and a desire.
Well, let me ask the members of the board if, in the absence of that happening in the, in the next two weeks, is, does anybody on this board feel like this board should take a position on this? Or should we rely on the school board association's position?
Yeah, I feel like we, you know, we kept the door open for folks that were at the steering committee meeting to provide feedback. And I guess I would categorize it as, I mean, I think obviously it's proponents, but it also was intended to potentially either refute or just a, a perspective on some of the unintended consequences that the speakers that were arranged, both South Burlington expert or expert individuals from municipalities and school, as well as those from Colorado. And I'm a little bit mixed personally because I feel like that was, that offer was extended right after that session. And nothing's really been forthcoming. And I, I can't speak to why that hasn't happened. And perhaps all the effort was kind of getting it through the Senate to the House. But based on the information we did receive, I feel like there are legitimate concerns that our school district would have. I'm not sure that it differs entirely. I mean, the VSB and VSA didn't really take a position.
That's correct.
They basically said, should things move forward, these are questions that should be answered. These are resources that should be deployed. And, you know, so I don't disagree with that, but- So I don't disagree with that, but the strong reference was back to the public health document that was published, I believe. And on that basis alone, which was not the basis of the steering committee and not something we've reviewed, but I think we've had access to, that is a real legitimate concern for our students and in a safe learning environment. So I guess a long-winded way of saying, I feel like we might want to do that, but I'm not sure we'll have any additional information to frame it in any other way than the way that the V S B A has already done.
Right.
Agreed.
Well, I would say at this point, where I'm feeling is that we should probably process this as individuals and think about what it might mean to our district, and if, and then decide at our next meeting if we want to do something. Find a way to, if this group decides that we do want to make a statement, we'll have to get that out forthwith at that meeting.
I'll certainly find out where, I mean, I'll inquire again with Kevin on, you know, or Kevin can update me on where they're at with that, as he's been the point of contact for, through David. So I can make that available to you. I think reviewing the V S B A, V S A, which are consistent in their construct, I think would be good just to re-review that. I don't know if everybody has a means.
Can you forward those to Bridget?
Yep.
Martin, is there anything else that you wanted to provide on the legislative front?
No, I don't think so. You can read the other paper column next Thursday. We'll be talking about this very issue that I'm writing or wrote today about marijuana.
From a legislative?
What's that?
Legislative.
The legislative one, yeah, so.
The only item that I have in the back of my mind was the earned paid sick leave. And I'm assuming our district does not have anybody in that situation that we would have to worry about in that regard? No?
We've looked at it. Amity's identified a couple of areas. It's not a significant expense, but there, I wouldn't say completely we wouldn't be affected.
All right.
Minimally, I'd say, right now.
Okay. Anything else on that agenda item? If not, let's move to master planning and visioning.
So start right out with March 22nd is the identified 6:30 to 8:30, March 22nd, in the high school currently. It's going to be posted up, and it's currently posted on our website. It will appear to just get out the information to the public in the other paper, but we are, as the board has previously said, committed to another follow-up with some added information coming from the consultants White and Burke, school board members and administration on where we are to date as a follow-up to the previous-held community meeting that happened back in November. So that's currently in play. I think that's a really important announcement, and we're going to work to get that out. We have a conversation, I think we need to talk about here a little bit more, about what that meeting will look like or what you want it to look like. So that would be my recommendation, is to talk about that a little bit and maybe seek some community feedback on what they think might work.
So who would like to start envisioning this March 22nd meeting?
Well, I guess I'd start by saying that I don't envision it necessarily being one meeting, but this is an introductory meeting. I think we're going to have to schedule more than one meeting, more than one opportunity for people to weigh in. And I look at, you know, we did this a little bit differently last fall with the issue of the Rebels name and such, but I think by the end of that process, we didn't have anybody questioning the transparency or the ability to have weighed in. And I think we have to make sure that we've given full ability to weigh in. And I don't know if I've, in my mind at least, ruled out some kind of a survey, but I'm not sure that that will be necessary or not. Maybe we can, I just haven't come to that conclusion. But I think it's really, it has to be more than one opportunity. But I think the 22nd is a good start.
And when I've thought about the meeting, Patrick, I've thought about kind of a, first a session that's downloading information, because we've been clear that we've evaluated five different scenarios through White and Burke. I'm not sure that all of those would go to this forum, so having some rationale for which ones actually go for consideration, I think is important. I do think it's important that we start on the presentation side of, if you call it that, with the strategy side of education quality first. So to really talk about the vision the administration has, that's either, you know, supported by professionals, that really just paints the picture for what we want to be when we grow up and what we're delivering. And it may be, it may be a vision that's different from what we have. It may be a vision that says, we want to preserve the program when we have, and here's our options moving forward. Then I think the financial analysis, without disclosing any confidential information, would be important to review. I think it could include a qualitative list of variables that went into the financial analysis, and then some kind of assessment of the cost of the scenarios that can be balanced against the educational benefits. And, you know, so I look at that as sort of a download session. And then I look at the community feedback as a little more informal in terms of potentially smaller roundtable discussions that board members, administrators could sit in on. But I think it has to be really seeking specific feedback relative to the information that's been presented. And I agree with you, Martin. I don't think it's a one-shot deal. I think what we might be seeking would frame what work, what next steps the board takes and how we go back to the next feedback session. And I, unlike you, I haven't ruled out other types of community feedback, but I think, you know, I remember, I listened to some of the feedback on the telephone survey that was done, which I did, I was not called personally, but it wasn't open-ended enough to kind of get, respond the way people want it to. So I think some of the questions we ask relative to the information that's presented should be more open-ended, but also be, have an availability of charts on walls. Again, I don't want to be prescriptive around the tactics of it, but make sure we can document the information that's collected so that we can draw some conclusions about how to proceed next. Those would be my thoughts.
And I would add that I think one of the open-ended questions should be for the community to say how they would like to see the process move forward, you know, how they would like to give input themselves, and what would make them feel heard and make them feel like they really do have input into the decision that's being made.
Julie?
I think that, I think the elephant in the room is what the U V M piece has to do with the process. And I think we're going to have to address that in terms of the information we know relative to the press conference that was held last week. And, you know, our process has been separate from that. And so I don't know how that goes into the future, but I do know that it's going to be up to the community to decide what they really want there, whether it's a school or something else.
Right.
And that could be in ground rules of the meeting, which is that uses of any school property that might be recommended to be consolidated, it maybe is not part of this conversation at this time, because that's speculative, and I don't think it plays to the discussion of any scenario recommendation based on the quality of the public education we're delivering at this point.
The only thing is that in the future, though, once we have more information that comes out of that feasibility study, there would be financial implications.
Right.
Right.
Obviously, depending on how we interact with the city if property were to be.
And maybe, we don't really know, so.
Yeah, right.
Right.
So that needs to be at least tabled, but in the future, there will be, that will be added into the models, because right now, we can't add that into the model. We don't know what any kind of financials around that would look like in terms of uses impacting.
So is there an alternative possible way of looking at at least one part of getting the input? And that is presenting the four or five options? That's probably not a very good idea, but I'll throw it out there anyway. And essentially saying, you know, what is, don't put the financials on there, but put the question of, well, what is this worth to you? I mean, that may be a little hard to process. I mean, would you be willing to approve a 5 million, a 10 million, a 15, a $20 million bond? The reason I say that in relation to the U V M proposal is that, you know, we don't know what that means financially, but sometime down the road, if that does go forward and that, or they want it to go forward, it would still have to come to the school board. But they say, you know, if they come forward, and we now know it would only cost us 5 million or 10 million for the school, whatever, I'm just making these figures up. Is that, or is that just not something anybody can really?
I think it's really hard for people to get their hand around that.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, that's kind of, as I was saying, that I was shooting it down myself.
It could be a lot, it could be, you know, a meeting that would be down, you know, in the future.
Right, I mean, that.
Based on some, you know, triangulation, and it could be, then what would it mean? So that might be a way of narrowing to.
I also have a feeling that we would get a lot of parents, a lot of people, you know, with kids in the system at this meeting, wanting to know what the outcome is. And that sort of discussion of, would you be willing to approve a 5 or a 10 or a $20 million bond? I think that's going to play differently with parents than it will with a wider audience.
I think that's another question about how we get the broad population at the meeting, rather than just, not that we don't want parents, but just the parents is a subset that we.
So you do, so you have the 22nd, but you have a whole, you know, you have something similar that repeats itself at, you know, senior lunch, you know what I mean? Is it a format that just gets repeated, the 22nd, and gets repeated and share, you know?
It's a good point, kind of like the budget.
Kind of the formatting, right? And then just so that can continue to gather, whether it's, so I don't know. Because I think that's your point, is not everybody will come to that meeting.
Right.
But how can you replicate that meeting again that will happen at different places?
My only fear in that model, and I see the value in it, is when we're talking about the budget in those forums, we're providing information, and this one, we're receiving it. And some of the value is everybody hearing the conversation, and then you're going to do it in little silos, and then we're going to be accountable for making sure it all comes back in a really transparent way, which is a big challenge.
Yeah.
Can I get my hand around how to do that? Also, I was thinking, is it possible to list all the positives and challenges, negatives, whatever way you want to form it, and list those? And then ask the different constituency groups to prioritize or weigh them? And then might even give you some data about what we really value, because we think we could, you know, increase security, let's say, or we could have more flexibility in our gradient, in our classroom structures and, or that. Or for the locale or parents' ease to be at school. Is that a challenge or not? But, you know, maybe if they, as a first step, to say, here's what we, and we might have learned all those from a year ago, when, there might be more to add with, but there could be this list of the, what's really, what would you see the benefits of what or not, or what are the challenges? And then rank, and then to weigh them by asking people what, you know, is it a priority? Or do you even agree that it says strength or not? Or, I want to start with that, and then you ask for that feedback, and they come back and say, here's what we came with, and it might guide further discussion.
Yeah.
So one thing that I don't perceive that this should be is us essentially doing an informal straw poll of what we want. I mean, what we want is constructive feedback for us to evaluate to come to the best decision we can come to. And then, if it involves a sale of the school, then we get the actual vote. But having said that, we do want to as broadly, you know, get as broad of an audience to weigh in as possible, and that does perhaps, that does mean that we should do a survey of some sort and make, because on a survey, we can also make sure that we understand what the person's interest is. Are they a parent? Are they a homeowner? Are they a business?
Yeah.
Control a little bit more, yeah, so.
I think.
Monica, did you, I'm sorry.
Well, this is Sammy, as a master of planning and transference, people are expecting a survey, and there's a valuable resource that we worked with that has a lot of information that could help build a survey based on what was already learned. And you certainly know more that you can allude to, to ask even more. So there's already a really good ground, I feel.
There was a draft survey that was put together.
Well, but I'd say that could be reviewed, but the people that have worked with.
Yeah.
Yeah. And with, if you add to that, allude to anything else you've learned along the way, but people are, would love, I would imagine, to participate in a survey, and that could help you focus your then-first community meeting, and it may invite a lot of people, a cross-section of people to come. And I know that when we had the groups before we, the meeting, we did talk about when people would come in, and we want to get a sense of who's here, you know, how old are you two? And we decided not, it was decided we weren't going to do that. We let people just come in and kind of visually try to figure out, was it a mix at your table? Was it only parents? And it wasn't. It was a strong cross-section there. And I think a survey, you can ask upfront, why not? If you keep it anonymous, ask people, tell us who you are, so we can tell if we have a fair sampling of the community, but work on some of what was already started. And you have a group of 13 people that spent about two years of their lives, that could probably give you their own two cents, as diverse as their opinions may be.
Is that a draft survey, something that the board could see?
I'll have to look. I mean, it was done back.
It was, I wouldn't even call it a draft survey, honestly, but the.
Some questions that were put together.
But, but the first round of research and the people that we've worked with and cope, they would not, I don't, hire them again, but I'm just saying, they have a lot of data that we did pay for.
Right.
And from that, it's kind of clear where some further questions in the survey could go. If you go back to their summary.
I think one of the concerns I have about doing a survey too soon is I think, I think we, as a board, we get better feedback with fewer question, I don't want to say fewer questions, but I do, I looked at the original, and it can get very lengthy. And we tried to sort of hone down to sort of five viable options. And my sense is getting interactive feedback will help craft a survey that would be a little more targeted and broadly applicable to a diverse audience. And, you know, I don't, I don't know that for sure. I'm worried that a survey at this stage is, runs the risk of not giving us actionable information yet. But I think it has a place in the future.
Yeah, I agree with you on that point. I think it's, we need to find the forum to communicate directly first, and then start asking more specific questions after. Because I feel like we all people a conversation before we start asking more specific questions.
So there's an interesting development that's happened that I think is worthy of just sharing with you. The Vermont Department of Health has a health index assessment team that's really free of charge. They're the same group that put the marijuana information together that was referenced to the V S B A and V S A. And so they met with, they wanted to meet with me. They were interested in following some of the work that was happening around master planning and visioning. The specific focus for them is really looking at health index assessment, or healthy community index. And so they have some neat, neat construct of how they would go about this. And so I think it would be worthy of looking at that, from advisory committee to questionnaires to data collection, community events and meetings, and recommendations. This may be an appropriate next step, but I think before we get there, you kind of need to think about the end game again, you know? Where are we at with an end game? We've got community airport at Chamberlain. We've got some other things in place. So I'm wondering, you know, if there was some bracketing that would go on, it may play out to be that they become a significant, helpful arm to do some of that work. It takes you a little bit out of the, I mean, you're obviously in the decision-making equation significantly, but it takes you a little bit out of that. It's, again, free of charge.
So can you explain who they are again? I'm sorry. It's the Health Department and?
Yes, it's the Vermont Department of Health. There's a separate group that's out there looking at ways to inform and statistically provide information around healthy communities. Two individuals that we met with, and I actually, because of kind of the health, healthy community, I worked with, working with Susie Merrick on this particular task, and. community, I, I worked with, working with Susie Merrick on this particular task. And we, she and I brainstormed a little bit here over the last month or so, that maybe this would be a possibility. We've had two, we've had, I've had one meeting with them, she's had another, just thinking about how we could use them to inform healthy, a healthy community, healthy educational system. So I can provide more information on that, but I, I mean, I don't wanna cloud things here. I do think that there's a lot of concern around, is that next meeting gonna be the, you know, when's the, and then is the one right after that gonna be the one? And, you know, to Martin's point, like, we're gonna need a series of things. But there are people also saying like, how many more? Um, when would be the end date? And there's a lot of things in play currently that I think, um, this may be an interesting, an interesting place. And I can forward you the information that we've currently collected. Um, and, you know, they, they put together actually for us today just a little, a little flow chart of kind of where we are and, and kind of getting into some decisions. I'm using this because I think when we look at healthy community, obviously edu, the educational system is, is probably one of the biggest, you know, um, components of that. I, I maybe, I'm not totally explaining that totally right on, on their purpose and cause. Um, we've, we've morphed it in. And actually, they approached us initially. I pulled Susie in looking under the wellness piece, but then thinking about, wow, this would be a, a really good opportunity. I get at this because I think there's, we gotta talk about kind of the end, the end date, um, more conclusively, I guess, or, or some point more conclusive. Cause again, we had master planning and visioning task force that went on for-
Right.
A year. Uh, we're in this place with White and Burke. Um, we know we, we've kind of promised a community meeting, we've talked about a survey. Um, and it just, for me, it just kind of starting to fit a little bit more concisely into something like this.
I mean, I think the end game is when we have all the information that we need and we've gone out to the community and we get their feedback and we have enough, enough to, to make some choices.
The hard part for me, and I hear what you're, I mean, the hard part for us is always to, you know, even the big community meeting that we had, you know, back in 2008, and then we had the, it's still not representative. You know, we've all talked about, you know, we bring 200 people in and we say, wow, it's a great crowd. But what, was it representative of our community based on our, and I think we used our, our voting information?
Yeah, okay.
Please.
You know, I think, when we think about this, is, is we, you know, there's two things that sort of evoke change. And one is a dissatisfaction with the current state of affairs. And the other is sort of an aspirational goal that is so compelling that you, you know, everybody gets on board and you wanna run to that. So if I look at that, you know, I, I don't think we have either yet, that, for the community to respond to. So I feel like part of our process is having a discussion about the information that might be a precursor to, um, you know, a situation that may become less than acceptable. And it might be in the form of aging facilities or noise levels at Chamberlain or traffic at Rick Markcott or, and it might be, um, you know, small class sizes at Chamber, you know, whatever it might be. So there's sort of that element of it. And, and the data may or may not support that in a compelling way. And it may be time sensitive. It may be totally fine for up to five, six years, whatever that is. And I think that's part of the conversation. The other might be the aspirations of whether it's new programming, whether it's, um, the cost of maintaining current programming, whether it's the notion that, um, uh, you know, there be, uh, some, some metric that affects student outcomes, even in the form of, um, you know, if, even if you look at mentoring, for instance, if, if there is a consolidated environment, for instance, where we can say to parents who have kids in the school system that, you know, your child over the career, over their educational career within South Burlington will have a relationship with at least the five same adults, for instance, for any given two consecutive year period of at least 20 hours a week. But I mean, I'm just sort of speculating. But, but something that's measurable and something that's meaningful that we know has an impact on students, and maybe to your comment, David, their, their health and wellbeing, but the learning environment. So I, I look at those two things and I feel like that, one is our responsibility to, to have that discussion with the community and then to kind of come back as a board and make a recommendation. I, I do consider it strategic, so it, it will have some time parameters to it. Um, and then that plan could be accelerated or move forward at a different pace based on external environmental factors. Um, but, but again, the community's gonna say, yes, that's worth it at the cost you're presenting to, something we can afford. But that's the conversation to me, that I'm looking for community feedback. I'm not sure we'll ever get-
Right.
-a robust diversity, but I think we can start to have different venues where we're presenting information on the kind of the future and then talking about aspirations and, and having that dialogue so that, I, I think one of the things that I, I know is a challenge for any public board is, um, having people feel like they're surprised when you get to a specific recommendation or even something that might be on the ballot. And that will be, that will be our challenge too, that we surprise fewer people.
So we, I think you're in a, I mean, I think we're in a, we should conclude with some, you know, sort of shared information on the 22nd.
Yeah.
I think the next steps should perhaps be reserved for kind of the same candid conversation, maybe at the 22nd, that some of you, the board, were, were looking for your feedback around these next steps, up to including some of what you just shared. And that could be done through the small table groups, which could come back to affirm kind of, here's what we heard. You know, we heard, we need a lot more, we need whatever. And I think to your point, Elizabeth, there's a whole series of things in between. But I think that the 22nd is, seems to be shaping up to be kind of, um, what you said, a download of information to bring people up to speed and then the opportunity to receive some of that feedback. So we've got education and we've got some financial stuff, that's the download. And then, then we pause and get some feedback and then we say, we don't, we don't, we're gonna listen to you and determine our, kind of our, our next step.
Yeah. And I would, and I would add to that. I think the, the point that Bridget made about making sure that we, we ask the question about process to the community as well, so we get that-
Nice, maybe ahead of time, yeah.
Piece, well, even in the, in the conversation, because I don't think we want to send the message that we've got this all figured out and we're gonna tell you how it's gonna go. We want their involvement in that. And I think the other thing that we haven't touched on directly yet is as we, as we start this conversation, I think we need to back up some of that, to that dump of information to a little bit farther back in time and remind everybody, this has started back here. We've done all these things-
Yeah.
-leading up to where we are today. And now we're talking to you about possible next steps.
Right, so somebody who's coming in, maybe who-
Right. I don't think we wanna assume everybody in the room remembers all of that necessarily.
That's a good point.
Yes, please.
This is what I've been hearing on the city side, is that first of all, the UVM opportunity could be fantastic, but they're equally or whatever interested in the mall side as well. So that may not even become something that is, and I think that's something the community, and they're doing feasibility study as well, which I think is coming out in, I don't remember when, but then soon.
August, I think.
Is it August?
Yeah.
And then, the other thing is that the airports now come out with, I think there's a plan or they have some proposals for their noise mitigation, um, which could be awesome and very helpful to that community. So I think that is important for people just to realize as they're thinking about this as well. Cause it's, they're just so intertwined.
Yeah, agreed. Okay.
Just one, one last quick. As you're looking, as the administration's working on the educational benefits, I don't think I mentioned this before, which is a little off the character. Does that mean you should-
Focus on how this is all gonna help on meeting our ends that, that we've defined. Just a reminder.
Yeah.
Thanks, Martin.
So, our next regularly scheduled meeting, if I'm doing this right, is the Wednesday before the 22nd.
Sixteenth, right?
Right, the 16th. That's, so that's our next opportunity to, as a group, finalize our plans.
We have a, we have a warned working session.
Session on the 7th.
See, that's why I said, to the best of my knowledge.
Monday, the 7th, 5:30, you have a working session.
Okay.
Uh, executive session with White and Burke.
Yeah.
And I'm gonna ask to amend that agenda, um, to put a business manager hire on there. I have some work to do with some of you around, you know, communicating, you know, that candidate. Julie was on that committee with me. Um, I'd like to try to get that position on there for that evening. That would be an open session item. And then we go into our working session at 5:30, so.
And will we need to add some of this conversation into the open session as well?
Yeah, I think you could. It probably would be nice just to be able to then get out. So again, we wanna be careful not to eat up your whole two-hour working session, but probably could do it in, at least process, preparation, communication on the 22, about the 22nd and then-
So I've got a number of notes. I know you've got a ton of notes. Um, why don't we take the first blush of it, and we'll, we'll, that at least try to draft what we think we heard as the predominant thoughts on how we would map out the 22nd. We'll see if we can get those together for the 7th. And we still have one more shot on the 16th to finalize that and tweak it and get it the way we need it to be before the 22nd.
But I do wanna be clear, it is, it is gonna be posted in the other paper, so it's fairly general, just short, but it's getting out the information. So I think every, every board member, everyone should know that it's gonna, it's being shared.
What about, um, front porch forum? Can we do that?
Haven't done that yet. Um, so we'll look at our normal and typical paths. I think, I don't know, Meg, do you know if we-
Delana usually does, I think.
So we'll, we'll add that if she's done that. I'm, I'm really good at promising things up, right? I get tallied on how many things I say, oh yeah, we'll do. But, we'll do that.
We should get, we should get a bell.
So, so you're gonna have a meeting on the 22nd where you're going to inform people, then you're going to, at a later point, collect point of view, then you're going to have a recommendation. And will the community still be able to weigh in on that recommendation? Or is it, do you feel that once the recommendation comes out?
So what I would, what I think I heard from the group, and this is what we're gonna test on the 7th, is that we're gonna have a conversation where we're gonna share a lot of information. We're gonna try to get a lot of discussion from the community that shows up at this event on the 22nd. And we're also gonna ask them to help us form the process that's gonna follow that. So I don't think we've gone that far down that road.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Any other conversation on this topic before we move along?
No, appreciate the feedback. It's a big, big topic and important to us. Appreciate it.
Okay. Uh, we are on agenda item 15 then, which we have for action.
Yes.
Limitations.
So I was not at the previous board meeting, the February, the February 12th board meeting. And this reflects some changes that I heard that came back, working with John, um, providing some additional clarity around my interpretation. Or maybe lack their interpretation, or something in between. So it's, it's the problem with a board that keeps having new members.
No, it's fine.
We keep, we keep wondering what you're talking about.
It's good to go back and revisit your interpretations.
So I may need a little guidance on how we walk through this process. Elizabeth chuckles at me.
I think you should-
She says, good luck, buddy.
I think you should develop your own.
Exactly. All right.
I think we should go back to committee work, myself.
What's that?
We used to do this by committee.
Yeah. We, we agreed to try this year.
We agreed to try for six months.
Six months.
About a year ago.
A year, yeah.
The only thing I would-
Are you volunteering to be on the committee, by the way?
The only thing I would add, I would argue again, that this is the heart of what the board should be doing. This is only second to our ends in making sure that you're monitoring the ends, which so far you're not doing it to my satisfaction. But that's, you know, I don't wanna talk about that again.
The board, I'll just say that the board still goes through the report. It's just that some of the legwork is done beforehand.
Right. And my, and my suggestion, we really haven't managed, when, when we talked about this before, was my suggestion that we pick a couple of these each year and walk, really walk through them very closely. As much for our own good in double checking the interpretations and such, as, as for the viewing public, you know, the folks that don't skip over this part of, of the important work that we do. Uh, but we haven't really managed to fit that in, given the schedule. It's been very tough to do.
So I would suggest, in my new role as chair, that we move this conversation to a working session of some kind to decide how we wanna tackle these as a board, and we get back to tackling the one that's on our agenda.
I like that idea.
And I think it's gonna come in set 17, item 17, when you look at your board work plan.
Oh, darn it.
That may be, that may be a place where-
So close.
Having asked it on comment.
Exactly.
All right. Detail policy number one. Risk incurring those situations or conditions described as unacceptable in the board policy, financial conditions and activities. Are there questions on the superintendent's interpretation? Hearing none. Are there questions on the evidence?
I, I had a question, actually, on, um, I think the notion of working toward financial plans, um, in place that minimize risk, I think the, and I hesitate on interpretation cause I think we've approved this in the past, but I think the commitment should be, we'll have financial plans in place that minimize risk.
Yep. My, my, the reason for the towards is that there are so many exposures out there that, I mean, when I, if I was to say that I have financial plans in place that minimize, then it's-
Well, isn't the exposure the minimize risk versus having the plan?
Yeah, so, again, incurring risk for those situations is unacceptable. So working towards having plans in place that mitigate that was the way I interpreted that. Not that I will have otherwise.
Well, is it possible to say something like, I, I agree with Elizabeth that working towards having plans in place sort of sounds like the plans aren't in place. You could, you know, put it as I will work, or I will have financial plans in place that minimize risk to the extent that is possible, or, you know, some kind of language after the minimize risk part that sort of mitigates, makes it sound like you're not saying you're gonna eliminate all risk that is out there, cause you can't do that ever. But minimize risk to, um, the most reasonable extent, or, you know, some, some kind of language like that that covers you, um, cause you can't eliminate all risk.
I think that the key, the reason it says work towards is the very first, um, the end of the first, um, 2.5, what it says, fellow to be derived from multi-year plan. And, and we are not, um, we don't, I guess, what Dave and I talked about, the resources and the time to, to keep that up. I mean, I've done a, a 10, or 10-year revenue plan three years ago for the budget. And, um, it's, it's just, the, we do a great job on year to year and we have some things that are multi-year, but as far as credible projections of revenue and expenditures, pretty hard because the state law changes every year. It just, it's not static. Even now, we don't know what our tax rate will be. Elections are over. And so that's, that's, that's the point. And, and we can change it.
And I, and I guess that's what I'm saying is, you have a financial plan and you've done what's within your control to mitigate risk. But we, we have that on employment contracts that are multi-year, which are the biggest nut anyway. So, you know, granted, they only go out as far as they go out, but, um, stewardship plan, so I, I think, I, I think that the emphasis is on the minimize or mitigate risk, not on having the plan.
Okay.
Any other comments on the interpretation on that one? Um, we're gonna have to come back to this anyway, but is, yeah, are there, are there questions or feedback on the evidence section of this? Okay. All right. So we're gonna move on to detail policy number two. Is there any questions on the superintendent's interpretation on detail policy two?
I like the ad.
Yep. Yes.
As evidence?
Page.
I just read that, I think. As well as, so it's under his interpretation.
What are, are they, yeah, but are they in evidence in any way, even just to reference?
I don't think so. I'm looking at.
Other than in expense.
And should there, should there be just an item on evidence that references employment contracts, since it's the biggest expense?
Yeah. It's a good catch.
Okay. Are there any questions on David's compliance?
The last two sentences were a little bit confusing to me, and this might be because I'm new to the discussion. So under, I report non-compliance, the part that starts, "But there is no comprehensive long-term plan in place at this time to provide accurate information. A system change at the state level is required." So I kind of understood the first sentence to mean what you were just talking about, that there's not, there just isn't the resource right now to do, to have a long-term, multi-year budget in place. I was confused about a system change at the state level is required, how that related to the fact that we don't have a long-term plan. It was just.
Well, I mean, again, I think it's a lot what John said earlier around the complications of how we fund education and how it is able to be predicted, and the effects that it would have on us as a district.
Okay.
And so a system change would, would need to be required in order to be able to be, to my perspective, compliant.
Maybe a process, maybe is a better word than system.
Yeah. Or, yeah.
Well, although it would be possible to, to make projections, even with those unknown variables, I mean, they're guesses, right? But, so we could have a long-term plan. I think that's a separate issue than the fact that we get assumptions from the state very late, and they change, and all of that. I think they're two different issues. There's, there's the resource issue that doesn't allow us to have the long-term plan in place, and then there's the, the state level issue that makes things change every year. But that's okay, because you update your long-term plan every year generally, if you have one in place, based on what you know at the time.
I mean, there's, there's definitely things here that we're able to have significant controls on, right? And that's the contractual components, when you look at that. Where it begins to get difficult is those planning assumptions and the predicted financial impact related to the state. So I don't know, there's, there's probably an equation here that there's seven variables, and of the seven variables, there's four or five that are predictable and we can plan, there's two that are un, you know? And so that kind of walks into that.
I mean, we could say, we could.
But you're not, but the policy, this one is, the detailed policy is that you shall not omit any credible projection. Are you omitting a, a projection that is credible? No, you just don't have some that are credible. That's a different problem.
Right.
So I think you're, you're in compliance with, with, in that context.
Yeah.
And, and actually, I think what you're, you're referencing, that the variables that aren't credible impact the tax burden more than the actual budget.
Right.
Needs. So I think this references really the.
Good point.
The budget requirements to fund the education system, less about how it gets paid for. So I, I think your projections are going to be more credible in terms of staffing and stewardship and so forth.
Yeah, I was hung, I'm really hung up on credible, because I'd like everything to be right and predictable and all that kind of thing. So that's where.
To some point.
Our angst is a little bit here.
Well, John and I, we work on this one together, so we, you know, we, so I think you poked at this one.
So you've gotten some feedback on that one?
Yeah.
You're probably good on that one for now, I assume? Unless there's other feedback? Detailed policy three, any, any feedback on the interpretation on that one?
Nope.
Hearing none. Any questions or feedback on evidence? Okay. David's reporting policy compliance. Any question about that?
It's just missing a sentence, I think. There's nothing there, right?
Right. A sentence underneath, I report compliance.
I report compliance, yeah, it just doesn't have a sentence or a character.
Well, if it, this is the first one you see compliance, we don't put anything there. We report compliance.
She's just saying, she thought there should be a sentence after this.
Oh, I see. Okay.
Okay.
I see.
And so we've got some that we have feedback on, so I believe where our steps are now is to have David to go back and make those changes, then we'll come back, look at them again with the overall policy. So this will come back on the next agenda. Any other questions on this before we move on?
Great, thanks.
All right. Move on to agenda item six, considering the school board meeting schedule for 2016-17, this is the year of action tonight. David, would you like to speak on this?
Sure. So it's in your packet. The dates are identified. Again, these are draft dates, so this is a good time for you to begin looking at your calendar and things that you know might be problematic that we should make changes to. There's two areas that are left to be, to be determined or to be assigned, is the three-hour work session, it may not be three hours, but typically, these have been holding places for us. We've, we've not had them on in the past, and we've, we've struggled, so there's, there's two dates kind of sequenced appropriately in, in the midst of, start of the year, and then kind of the mid-year timeframe. So we, we don't necessarily have to set those, but it would be good to just get this, get this out, or get this confirmed.
It, it's just a thought. In December next year, it's where the calendar fits. December 21st is probably the latest date before the holiday break that you, that's typically where we present, there's administration's recommended budget. So, I mean, we could fix that by presenting it on December 7th, but there's a, a lot of information that comes in, but with the date of December 15.
Now, Mr. Stewart, what are you talking about? This "we" stuff?
"We." I caught that "we."
I like it.
He's back. He's back.
I noticed I'm still employed.
I appreciate that.
It's just an observation. It might be a little tough to get any public there, that's for sure.
Yeah, that's true.
Well, my, yeah, my recollection on that meeting is that we actually had several lively discussions after that date it was presented, still, so I don't think that's the end of the world.
So this is, again, the focus is on the board meeting dates. We typically get very busy when we pull in budget stuff. So our budget planning, or our agenda planning, needs to encompass a significant amount of time for budget conversations prior to that December date that John just indicated, to include probably a working session, not necessarily in between August and September 7th, but maybe, and then maybe others in there, but part of it is to identify our agendas to have a significant amount of time for budget conversation. And that will be, that will play into our calendar when we look at our policy reviews, so that we're not heavy on some of those, which, you know, we've done, we've done better in the past, this past year.
And I think it's our, it's the norm, because of, I'm assuming vacations, that July, we hit, we're down to one meeting.
Right. Right. That's been the case. But again, this is, this is for you to.
Yeah. Any other discussion for the board on this?
You know, I'd actually just ask you, David, back, is, you know, the, the meeting that likely would have occurred December 21st from this year's budget would have been the one that we were talking a lot about, the staffing issues, and there would be a requirement for, you know, administrators to be in attendance and be available to respond, based on budget requirements. So I, I'd ask you, is that going to be a date that might represent some difficulty for staff?
Okay.
I won't be here November 16th.
November 16th.
Second day of the deer hunt in Michigan.
And just looking back on the calendar.
That's where it starts.
I think, again, we're looking around here. All right, so we're still in school, that session. One more day of school after that.
Yeah.
So administrator should be around. Yeah, okay.
That's a good point.
Okay. Any other discussion on that calendar? If not, we require action on this agenda item?
Yes. I mean, it's always open, you know, doing some changes, but we're starting to put them out, and that's important, I think, for community members. Typically, we don't wander too far from our Wednesdays. Haven't. So I would like action.
Do I have a motion to approve this calendar?
Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
So the immediate page that follows in your packet was the school board meeting topics. So these were the other topics, it was the, the single page. And what, what we've done is we just removed it off of the bottom of the, off of this. So remember, our bottom of our others, Bridget, we've had a whole series of others, reports on the bottom, and that's, these are the reflected ones that we think are still active. We removed some because we've included them either in our monitoring reports. I haven't purposely removed anything that we didn't talk about, that it's not included. Is that right, Mr. Stewart? You think of anything that we've removed? Here.
I'm not saying anything.
So this is just a discussion item.
Mm-hmm.
Are there items that we need, that you have questions about on this? I just noticed one, just, this is just a curiosity question, that this says, financial planning and budgeting, which is one we just talked about tonight, is, is it normally scheduled for the October timeframe?
Yeah.
Is that what I'm seeing there?
Mm-hmm.
So, okay.
But you can see from the conversation of budgeting, in September, you have ends conversation, which is appropriate, and then financial conditions, but we're, we're now heavy into Septem, in September, October, November, December are all heavy budget, and we've identified some stuff there in the monitoring report. Second meeting in December is budget. It's still, you know, we're, we're, and then heavy in, obviously, January and February. Well, I think we always feel pushed, and I think you all feel, have all felt pushed budget-wise.
Go ahead.
Just, just so it doesn't get forgotten, the March 2.4 financial condition and activities is the audit, but also, we, at one point, had a retirement, the retirement plan needs to be highlighted in there, too.
But don't we also have, this was my question, John, don't we also have, we should have 2.5 on here again in the spring, like we're doing now, or March, right? Because.
I think, I think Pat's, Patrick's point here was, it's been delayed because of certain things, the budget, and because we didn't get it done. It was, it was supposed to be the introduction of the budget this year, if you go back to our budget plan.
And we pushed.
It was November 2nd.
But I thought when we did, I, I must be deluded about this, but I thought.
You thinking we do it twice?
I thought that we did 2.4 and 2.5 twice a year.
2.5 only once, to recap the prior year's budget, and then.
Okay.
And then the audit takes care of the budget again, because it's in there, so.
Okay.
That's my view, anyway.
That's fine, thanks.
Yeah.
So do we want to leave 2.5 where it is on the plan at this point? Or do we want to move it to the time of year that we did it this time?
I mean, I think John needs to answer that, like, what's the best time for you, and you're, not you in particular, but.
Well, it, it really would have helped, when Dan was here, he, he didn't understand why we had a surplus that wasn't reported, so it really would have helped set the tone on November 2nd. So this October meetings, that's fine, too. It's, it's okay where it is.
Okay.
So for the part on the ends monitoring, the parentheticals, I think, were what we were dealing with this year, or is this what you're contemplating for next year?
This is what we were contemplating for next year. It's different. I'm pretty sure we added some additions in here. Yeah. Based on feedback that we.
Is there anything, David, that requires action similar to what we needed to do with the proficiency-based graduation requirements?
Not that I know of, Elizabeth. Not that I know of. I think we're, at this point, we're in compliance. But I'll have to think that through a little bit more, too. Some of the state, other state things, I think we've aligned it. Good point, though.
I would just add to the topic list, I think we need to have some kind of board discussion about the revitalization of the foundation.
Yeah, for others, under the, under the, yeah.
And I, back to the ends monitoring component as well, I would think that one of the times we should hear from you is an overview again of where we are with, with establishing metrics for all the ends, because these are kind of focusing in on.
Too specific.
Yes, specific topics, and I think we need one of these to be an overview of where we are in establishing our metrics across the board.
So you want to pick one?
Before the whole academic year starts.
Do you want?
Can you do that?
What's that?
Can you do it in the summers, before, like, the academic year starts, so that we know what we're doing for the year?
Is that, wait, is that on one of the ends? Here's the.
No, I mean, just broadly, where, where are we on establishing metrics for all the ends, as opposed to being more specific? I seem to recall, as far as the ends monitoring, for how does the budget affect the ends?
Yeah.
That that was really quite focused, and that didn't take very much time at all, so.
That'd be a place where you could make sense to have that.
Actually, I kind of like the idea of having it in August as well, if that's something that's more.
You could do a look back and then a look forward about how we want to modify any of that if we, in between, middle of the school year, I'm not sure.
Maybe that could be in that work session.
Yeah.
So I hear what you're saying, is kind of a, an ends review either in later August or before the start of school?
Yeah. Yeah, one of those two meetings in August.
We could do that, right, Mr. Stewart?
The "we" is bad.
We wish.
And then I think what we'll do is on that, when is our next work session that we have scheduled? Is that coming up?
Yes, it is.
On our calendars?
Yeah, it is on our calendar somewhere.
I don't know when.
So we should probably at least put on there, depending on what else we have on there, the conversation about how do we manage our monitoring, see if we want to go back to a clause, committee form or not, so we don't lose track of that.
I think it should be arduous for whoever the clerk is for the coming year.
I think we can make that happen. Any other conversation on the work plan? Are we good? All right. I think that moves us to agenda item 18, unless I'm miscounting. Setting the agenda for our March 16th meeting.
So I just want to say, I'm not going to be here for the April 4th meeting.
April 4th.
That's the meeting after this March 16th meeting. Just letting you know.
Okay. And I am not going to be here on the 16th.
Okay.
So I don't know, we can look at that agenda, we can make a change if you wanted to.
April 5th, you mean, right? Oh, I'm in 2017.
Yeah, 5th, sorry.
No, 4th, 4th. I had the wrong year.
Oh.
Well, I think we're going to need to spend some significant time on the, on planning out the meeting on the 22nd, making sure we have that straight, so we need to make sure we have enough time on that one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You're no, no David this time.
And so this, so.
It's the pay structure.
David, do you want to?
Hold off the 2.
us to Agenda Item 18, unless I'm miscounting. Setting the agenda for our March 16th meeting?
So, I just want to say, I'm not going to be here for the April 4th meeting. That's the meeting after this March 16th meeting. Just letting you know.
Okay. And I am not going to be here on the 16th.
Okay.
So, I don't know. We can look at that agenda. We can make a change, if you wanted to.
Yeah, 5th, sorry.
No, 4th, 4th. I had it wrong here.
Well, I think we're gonna need to spend some significant time on the, on planning out the meeting on the 22nd, making sure we have that straight. So, we need to make sure we have enough time on that one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You're no David this time.
And so, this, so...
It's the pay structure.
David, do you want to hold off the 2.5 to the next meeting when you're here? Or should we finish that?
Well, I think, I guess if I make the changes, then maybe we can keep it on there, John, and then you can, since you're working closely with me on that one, then I think you could keep it on. We could keep it on for the 16th. That would be, I think, a good use of time in my absence. Not to put that pressure on you, but...
That's no problem.
And do we want to come back next week and finish the conversation on the voting? Will we have the absentee data? Do we want to bring that back to this board?
I don't, if I can, I will, I'll find out from Ray Mann what he has. I can't believe it would be that difficult to disaggregate that, some of what we had. So, I will, I will do... Yeah. Where would you like to put that?
Well, it could be a very short agenda item.
Do it under superintendent's report.
Under superintendent's report would be good, I think, right?
Yeah, we'll just put voter. Update. Writing 2.5.
And under that same superintendent's report, we'll cover anything we hear back from Kevin on any new form, talking about marijuana legislation. And I think you also have under your superintendent's report, even though you won't be here, if you could get us information on where we stand with the student voice.
Yep.
So, we could have that. That's all. I have any other questions on our March 16th agenda? Okay. Future agenda items? So, we've got some of these items that I just saw on the work plan. I'm always a little, this is always a little nebulous on our agenda, about what we're doing with this. If we crosswalk this against the work plan, is the board comfortable that we're addressing them via the work plan? Or do we, do we want to leave them on this list?
What we, what we started to do, Pat, and again, I'm not sure that for you or Bridget, but what we, what we did is, we started putting, when they would reoccur, either in the monitoring report. So, for instance, the Education Quality Standards Monitoring Report is going to be included in the 2.10. So, we started to do that, and I'm not wanting to say they're completely conclusive. So, we may want to continue on that, or pull out those that are not in the monitoring and come up with a more delineated plan to talk about them.
They got a minimum. If we could put after each one of these, like, if they're on the work plan, or if they're somewhere, like, the ones that are in the monitoring report, it's clear we'll cover them when we cover 2.1. For the ones that don't have something, we can say they're gonna, they're on the work plan to be discussed in August, or whenever they are. And that way, we can look at it quickly and go, we know they're on our list. We may want to move them up or move them down, but they're on the list somewhere.
That's fair.
Yep.
We've had many strategies on this particular area, putting how many times it's been on, to dots, to monitoring report. We made some good progress. Crossed some off.
Many options on this, as you do board members over time, I'm sure. Did you have something else?
I was gonna say, one that occurred to me, I don't know if it's an opportunity to revisit in a superintendent's report at some point, but on performance evaluations. I know there were some follow-on items as recommended by the consultant that came in, and I can't remember when we were gonna...
Where we included them in the monitoring.
I think we did it in the monitoring.
Is it in the monitoring?
It's part of the teacher or staff.
Teacher and staff?
And they're on this list, too.
It wasn't before, though, Elizabeth.
Is it on that list?
Yeah.
That's where I was looking for it.
Teacher-staff evaluations is the last one. Anything else on future den items? Okay. Moving on to Agenda Item 20, the minutes of the February 16th and February 17th meetings. Do we have any comments or adjustments to those minutes?
So, does the new chair and clerk sign it? Because then we have to change the names there. I assume that that's the case. I think it just probably could be scratched.
We can probably handwrite those on there. With those adjustments, do I have a motion to accept the minutes?
Do we do it by consent?
Yeah, we just do.
Oh.
Yeah, unless there's a change. I think it's...
Does anybody have an objection if on this agenda, we call that consent in bold there as opposed to action, so I don't get confused? Thank you very much. Now, we're on to the consent agenda, which is different than what we just consented to.
If you want a motion, Chair, I'm happy to give you a motion on the...
I don't need to create more bureaucracy if we don't need it.
Okay, fair enough.
All right.
So, under the consent agenda, just quickly, we've got a Point 2 FTE Math Coach Leave. Again, we do believe that this can be appropriately filled, so I'm recommending approval of that. And you also have bus bids, which is in your packet. If there's any specific questions, it's right behind the superintendent's report for that one. Any questions?
No questions, we'll move along. Agenda Item 22, Accounts Payable Orders 31 and 32. Any questions on these? These are consent as well. Hearing nothing. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Seconded. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Thank you very much. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much.